All meeting orders, they haven't say the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance between the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alright, can we get a motion to approve the agenda? So move Marty, second here in discussion. I'm gonna just change things up a little bit on the agenda, I'm gonna move executive session to the front end here so we can do that until time gets here. Any other discussion on the agenda? We're gonna do it first.
We're gonna move the executive session, this executive session is pretty old, we're gonna move it right up under public communications.
Line item six, we're gonna bring it up under public communications. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Conflicts disclosures?
None.
Alright, public communications. Does not appear we have any. Can I get a motion to move into executive session for personnel? So move Aaron.
Second.
Second, Marty. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
You had to say it here, we'll leave.
Okay, we'll get things back started again and we'll go ahead and move to, uh, did we do public communications already?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move to the budget hearing to approve the, uh, kind of a motion to approve the 2025-2026 budget.
Go moving.
Thank you Joel, second. Thank you, Aaron, discussion.
Okay, do you want me to talk?
Yes, please.
Okay, general fund, I'll just start with general fund. There are really not many changes since the preliminary budget, um, I think since preliminary budget, I updated the transportation amount, insurance amount, and I think that's about it. So really no changes there, um, our revenue, the majority of our revenue there is based on enrollment. So what we are estimating right now, that can change because we're estimating what we think at this moment. It doesn't take effect until the last Friday in September when the actual count goes in. So that's, you know, that's about the only thing that could really change. So as far as the general fund, do you have any questions or do you want me to go into more detail about something there?
Laurie, the big thing I looked at is that, I mean, we always talk about we don't have much choice on, uh, revenue or how the state sets the formula for the general fund. But the one thing we do have a choice on is what our expenses are to a certain extent. And I, I calculate we're only increasing, uh, general fund expenditures of 1.3% this year. Does that sound right about to you? Not put you on the spot, but...
Um, yes, I mean, if you look across...
That's pretty tight.
Yeah. And again, 70 to 75% of the general fund budget is salary and benefits. Salary and benefits, transportation, insurance, those are our big ones.
Okay. Any other comments, general fund?
I, I just think it's important to notice that, you know, when you look back here at the history, uh, since 2017, you know, salaries and benefits have went up over 30%, and we all know that the state funding has absolutely not kept up with that. So I think that's just important to note that we're, uh, living within our means as best we can.
Which, yeah, and we could go down a whole nother path there, but, you know, with the state, how, you know, they are now dictating to us what our minimum salary can be, you know, but still we're not getting any state funding. You know, if we don't live up to their standard, we're going to get penalized first, you know?
Right.
Interesting.
Okay, capital outlay?
Okay, capital outlay. So first we'll start with the revenues. So at the last, when we talked about the preliminary budget, you had asked me to, when we got to this point, I have a page 1A and a page 1B for revenues, okay? So the 1A is the revenues if we would keep our tax call what it is today, which is the 1-9-2-5, okay? The 1B is what the revenues would look like if we would increase to, if you look, you know, the capital outlay limitation, I put those pages in there, and this is what we are getting from the state each year. The maximum we can go in capital outlay is a $3 per thousand levy, which we're not at that. We cannot automatically just jump up to that. So this year, and so each year we're limited. We can either increase, um, according to our maxima, max level plus roll or on a per student, and it is whichever one is less. And so this year, um, we can increase to $2,055,000, which is approximately 130,000 more than what we called for last year. Our valuation has increased to 850 million. So if we would go up to this 2, 2,055,000, they're not going to see much effect on that. But I, I think it's important that we keep up with that increase, the minimal increase that the state allows us because if we don't increase, next year we're not going to be able to take a bigger jump if it's necessary. We're still going to be limited to, you know, the 0.7 or whatever percentage.
Right now it's by the cost, I put 38.69 and whatever. If you don't keep up, then you're going to revert to that 38.69, which then on your capital outlay, if your enrollment drops, that's going to drop. So you'll probably end up using the 38.69 regardless, but your valuation will probably go up. If you haven't increased that, you're not getting flexibility of having the max, but you could, okay?
And also, you know, if we, another point, and I put this on, I don't know, you guys probably didn't notice it, but on the page 1B down in the left-hand corner, the taxes run from January through December. School fiscal year is July through June. So if we would make the $2 million call, we're only going to get half of it in this next school year. So it's not like we're going to get the full 2 million. Okay, so that's the revenue side. On the expenditure side...
Anybody have any questions specifically?
Okay, I'm going to back that up, one, back to the revenue. Um, I have put in here, it's for, it's putting up in our budget the resolution for the $750,000. I do have that inserted into the capital outlay budget. So as far as the expenditures, I've given you a breakdown to show you exactly what purchases we're making with capital outlay. There's also another spreadsheet that shows you, you know, like what capital outlay funds we would have left before we have to dip into our fund balance, which we have to do for the demolition project. Do you have any specific questions or is there something you want me to cover better?
So we're gonna, you have a kind of tentative late call, almost another $100,000 more out of capital outlay this year. Is that any particular reason that we're...
That I'm asking for another $100,000? No, just that what I just explained to you about the state and what they're allowing us to grow the, you know, they're allowing us to grow that 0.7% and if we don't, then we're going to be stuck down here and we won't be able to make a bigger jump if necessary.
Right.
I'm just trying to clarify, are you asking, are we doing an additional $100,000 transfer for capital outlay general fund?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant the tax call.
No.
No.
From capital outlay to general?
Yeah, it's to cover the general fund expenditures. Because our enrollment, at this moment, we are estimating our enrollment will be down for next year.
How often have you used, would you put a transfer, the amount?
Um...
Have you ever used the maximum that you...
Uh, if so, maybe one time, but I don't know that, I mean, you know, there's been a couple of years where we didn't use any.
You've got that in here, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in here.
I think with the last six years or so, we've always gone less than what we budgeted. Like, do you remember where, do you have that in, Laurie?
Yeah.
Is that miscellaneous?
One thing about the transfer, if you transfer, don't you, that you don't spend it?
Right, still still...
Take it back.
Well, I don't transfer it until the end of the year.
Right.
And so like this year, '24, '25, if you look at our budget, we had 473,000 to balance the budget. Um, I'm working on annual report, you know, the next two months, and so I'm estimating that I'm going to transfer 400,000.
And you don't do a partial during the school year, you just wait?
I wait until the end.
Yeah, I mean, is that in the statement?
It's somewhere in...
Yeah, it's in there.
We've got to pump the balance. You're going to have to put more tabs on your pages, Laurie.
Oh, I found it. You said the capital outlay section.
It's in the capital outlay. Where's that?
Well, it shows what we've transferred, but that doesn't show what we had budgeted. It is...
Very last page.
It's just a couple of pages behind the capital outlay limitation of the state, the colored pages from the state. Just a couple of pages behind that.
Capital outlay transfer to that. But that was the total...
But this is capital outlay transfers, I just, you know, this isn't, it isn't like it's something new in the last few years. It's just how the state, you know, as they change how it allows us, you know, because at one point, you know, we couldn't transfer, but we could expense, like I think it was insurance and other items like that. We could expense, you know, so they've been allowing us to do things like this, it's just how they word it differently.
2016 is when it changed. 2016 is when it changed.
Yep.
And we have three years.
Before that, we were using it anyway, for other purposes.
For the public's knowledge, out of the last nine years, three years, we transferred zero. One year, we might have came close to transferring the full month budget, the other one's been less. Any other specific questions for Laurie on capital outlay?
I had asked her about this on technology, because it's so high this year, and if there was anything that we could postpone a little bit. And the only thing she really mentioned was the door keys or something.
Yeah, and that's, that's like $12,000, that would be more like a question we would have to ask for Tanny, because, you know, like, I know, like, we have the rotation and, like, phone hooks, we have to get them every single year because of freshmen, so, you know, as far as something that could be postponed...
Is that the elementary door access control additions, the 11-9 you're talking about?
It is.
And you have in here possibly whether or not we could use refunds for that?
Yes, I'm going to try to.
Other questions for Laurie on the budget? That you want a motion, if there's no other questions, do we need a motion to accept one proposal? 1A or 1B?
Yep, so we have a motion to approve the budget, but before we do that, can we have a motion for which amount we are going to...
I'd make a motion for 1B.
Okay. Got a motion from Larry to approve 1B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Marty, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, Laurie, special education fund?
Um, special education, so, um, as you know, the last couple of years, three, two, three years, we have been decreasing our tax call amount in there. And, um, so this year, I did use about $400,000 worth of fund balance. We still do have fund balance in there, however, I'm asking the board to just... I don't think we should increase it again this year, because at some point, we're gonna have to turn that around. And right now, we have some high costs out of district placements. And otherwise, as far as special ed, it's just, it's for the co-op costs, which is our OTPT, speech, psychology, it's our out-of-district claims statements, and then it's our salary and benefits. Those are the expenditures that come out of SED. And we get no state aid instead, which a lot of districts don't anymore, so that is fully funded by the district.
I think you're right, we need to protect that budget a little bit, but I think we've done a solid for the taxpayers the last couple of years.
Absolutely.
By decreasing that amount, and now we're not asking for more, we're just gonna keep up where it has been. And I think you're right, we can't do too...
Cavalier.
Cavalier, no, get into the reserves too much, I think, I think we've done a good job with that. I'm in favor of that.
I agree, I think we've done a really good job the last couple of years lowering that call. Still have plenty of reserves, and we should be good.
Okay, next. Next is the QSCB fund, which as you know, is our sinking fund, and that is for the elementary renovation. And so that fund will actually be going away in a couple of years. Um, that is the one where we pay the principal payment. It goes into the sinking fund, so the principal sits there for 20 years, we don't pay that off. It goes into the sinking fund, it collects interest. We also make the interest payment, I have to do reports to the federal government, we get reimbursed that interest, okay? So now we're at the point, we're at like year 18, I think, somewhere right around there. And we have enough built up in our sinking fund, and it has generated enough interest where we do not have to make those principal payments for the last couple of years. I am still making the interest payments, and I'm getting reimbursed that from the federal government. Um, and so with that, when we did that elementary project, our district, we are saving approximately $500,000 because of how that sinking fund, how that funding source was set up. So that ended up being a really great deal for the district.
Yeah, nice job.
So there's two payments we don't have to make, which, you know, they're like a hundred and some thousand, it's the interest we generated.
When did that start, this program?
When did we do that, was it 10, or when did we do that elementary renovation?
It would have been in 2007, the paperwork was...
I remember, it was 10.
So 1910 or anything?
It wasn't free money, but it's just a free issue, yeah.
Absolutely, it was very close to free. So actually, that'll be going away in a couple of years, so that was...
You're saving a half a million dollars, that is a big deal.
Huge.
There's, uh, I hope the, I hope the district patrons can find, I mean, saving a half a million dollars is a big deal. Not every district does that, and I think it's because you've had boards in the past that have also been willing to look at different methods and ideas, so kudos to those folks.
Next is capital projects, and this is the fund that we had where, um, you know, when you're doing a building project, you have to have the capital projects fund. And so this is money that is left over from our construction. And so what, this will be the last year for it. What we're using that for is still, um, you know, like when we did the boiler, got rid of the boiler, and just some of those things to clean all of that stuff up. And so, you know, we're actually lucky that we have some funds left over to help us with some of these other projects. And this, this money is already spoken for on projects, so this will also go away this year.
Thing that we gotta remember, though, a lot of that money is because of the, how we invested it, and we did receive interest. That was significant.
Large amounts of interest this year, arriving on that capital projects money.
I was gonna jokingly say, let's not call it left-over money, let's call it appropriated money. Because that was down under the plan.
Yeah.
You're right. Okay, and then our food service fund. I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory, and drivers that fund is self-explanatory as well. So any other questions from, about anything?
I'll just say, this is one of the funnest booklets you put together all year. There's a ton of good information in here.
Well, and it's interesting, I mean, you guys don't look at it on a daily basis, but when you actually look at, you know, when you look at the general fund, and it's like, okay, if you ask me this number, okay, we pull it from this page here, or we pull this from this page, I mean, everything ties together.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments?
She likes that better than Albert.
All right. All in favor of the budget as presented, using capital outlay, um, 1B, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes, is that just one, or?
One motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of our last three meetings, is that correct?
Well, and the co-op meeting's in there as well, so three or four minutes.
Thank you, Aaron, second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to...
Three different motions for these 1, 2, 3, please.
Okay. Motion to approve the financial statements as presented? Thank you, Joel, second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty, discussion?
I do have to say, in June, we did get, um, Jody Starley stocked in with a little gift. Um, she had, they had $16,000, you know, from money that had been donated from the athletic complex that they have been dealing with over the years, so we did get a check for that.
Thank you. That's, uh, what was their group called again?
What's your area sports complex?
Yeah.
Maybe?
Just can't remember. Thanks, Jody, and to anybody that contributed to that, it's very nice to get those funds. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve supplemental budget 4-06-25. Thank you, Joel, second? Thank you, Marty, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the contingency transfer as presented in your packet. Thank you, Larry, second? Thank you, Marty, discussion?
This is just an annual thing we do at the end of the school year to get the funds cleaned up, because I can't have negative balances on the annual report. And then this is coming out, if you don't, if you look at your budget, again, there's, at the end, we have like $30,000 contingency, that's what is coming out.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to adopt the resolution to borrow funds for the demolition of the old vocational wing. Thank you, Larry, second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty, discussion?
So we're gonna do this motion to adopt the resolution, and then I'm going to give you this information for the three banks that submitted their info, and then we'll do a second motion for the bank.
Okay.
So first of all, um, the resolution that is just giving us authority to um, issue capital outlay certificates for $750,000, it is short-term. And we've discussed this before, it's basically a safety net for our unknowns for the demolition over here. And when we get to the end of the next year and the demolition is done, you know, if we didn't have to utilize a lot of those funds, we have the capability of paying this off early instead of making the annual payments.
I think it's also important to note, what is the interest rate we currently receive on funds on deposit?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
It'd be, it's over 2, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if our interest rate we have on funds on deposit, I think it's like 2.4 to 2.8.
Yeah, yeah.
We're really only talking about, on these numbers that we have here, from the low end of 1.9 to, you know, the highest one on there would have been, uh, 2.6. That's something to keep track of, I think we're, because it's not like this money goes away, we still have the flexibility, we have it in our fund, it's really only costing us that 1.6, 1.4, whatever it ends up being with where we're at for our interest rate at that time.
When do you access this?
Um, I believe, um, once we make the motion tonight, I will notify Colliers tomorrow, and then they will start the process.
So you'll have it in hand?
Soon, until like August for sure.
Yeah, I was just, had a thought there, whatever, something, we have a thought. Do you get it before you need it, or do you get it after you need it, or when you need it? Joe, that was just a comment.
Well, they already have the payments scheduled set up, so we might as well get it instead.
Yeah.
Okay, so first motion we would have is, uh, we've already made a motion to adopt the resolution. The second motion, if we approve the first motion, would be then which bank we approve.
Yep, it would direct Colliers to proceed with whichever bank.
All right, so any other discussion on adopting the resolution as presented?
Tom, I'm gonna abstain from this vote, as we will be a subcontractor on the project.
Okay. Joel abstained. Any other comments, Aaron, Marty, Larry? Great, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, then we have a motion to approve any of the three banks?
Which, if you look at this, Dakota Bank is...
Little bit.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I have a motion to approve Dakota Bank by Aaron, second? Thank you, Marty, discussion? All in favor, say aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay? So we had a motion to adjourn them for 2024, 25?
Yes.
Yeah, Larry, before Larry, you go, though, I, well, no, we wanted to sign you a job. Yeah. But I just really would like to say, on behalf of the board, and more importantly, the community, thanks, Larry, uh, for everything you've done. You have spent a ton of hours down here on this CTE project, and really brought a lot of insight. And I think, uh, did a great job of working with a lot of different contractors and getting us a fantastic finished product that, I don't know if we would have gotten if it wasn't for you, Larry. You did a great job down there, and I really think that you deserve a, a lot of credit for that building. And that's gonna be here for a long time.
That's just doing your job.
Well, you went above and beyond.
You did more than that, Larry, I can attest, as a contractor on the site, Larry was probably there more than I was a lot of the time. You know, Larry, he put a lot of time in, and pointed out a lot of things that needed the dressing, and he did it diplomatic way, and...
Happy to do it.
We'll miss you, Larry. Oh, yeah. And Marty, I gotta say also, thank you very much for all the years jumped on the board here. You know, it's tough when, uh, your wife is also a teacher, and, you know, that can get tough when you're one of five members that makes decisions about salary, pay, days off, days not off. And that's a tough spot to put you in, Marty, and we really appreciate you jumping on and helping us out, and a lot of times bringing very good insight to the board from a staff member's perspective. None of us up here have ever been staff members before, and we can hear things from the staff, we can hear things from administration, but it really made a lot of difference coming from you, especially with your extensive experience, and, I mean, you're really good at, Marty, we, uh, we got very lucky back, and I can't remember what year you decided to leave Mulbridge and come to Webster. But 2016, that's one of the best things that happened to the Webster School District.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I feel the same way, I mean, you know, I don't see things through your glasses or your lens, you know, and that's how he, as a board member, understands things, uh, much better. Thank you.
I hope you guys still call us and tell us your great ideas. Yep, they do. I'll call you, trust me, that's fine. All right, uh, with that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn the 2024, 2025 Webster Area School Board of Education? Yeah, so that's Marty, and then, oh, yeah, wait, Larry did make it, and Marty seconded, so...
You better get this one right, Tom.
I got it right, it was Larry, Marty. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Well, thanks a million, buddy.
Thanks for everything.
Appreciate it.
See you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Marty, thanks for everything, Larry.
It's too bad.
He's still stopping in the middle of us.
Are you still stopping?
Yeah, bring some lunch. Oh yeah.
Good luck guys. You gonna stay for the rest of the meeting Larry?
Huh?
You gonna stay for the rest of the meeting Larry?
Is there a reason?
Is that a trick question?
Won't affect my pay.
You need to sign this one.
Thank you Larry.
Yeah, thanks Larry for chatting.
Oh.
Thank you. Thanks Marty. Okay, so at this time, we will administer all to the new board members, so if we could just start with unit and you'll just read that out and sign it? Read it out loud?
I, Nick Bosh, I'm of Webster Area School District, number eighteen dash five, have, having been elected as school board member of the above named school district in the above named county in South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and to faithfully perform the duties of school board membership and by filing a bond if required by law and having it approved.
And then you'll just sign that and then Mark, if you'll read yours out loud please?
I'm Mark Hassan of Webster Area School District eighteen dash five, have been elected as school board member of the above named school district in the above named county in South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support laws of the constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and do faithfully perform the duties of school board membership and by filling, uh, by filling, filing a bond required by the law and having it approved.
Then you'll just sign that please?
I did.
Okay. I'll pick on who won or not, and so then at this time, we will call the twenty-five, twenty-six Board of Education and I ask for nominations for chair, please.
I nominate Tom Santis as chair first one.
I move nomination cease and pass unanimous ballot.
Okay, so we have had a motion and a second to nominate Santis and we've also had a motion that nomination cease and a unanimous ballot be cast, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Your turn.
Alright, thanks Lloyd, thanks Joel, thanks Mark, Nick, Aaron. Alright, motion to, uh, call for nominations for vice chair.
Nominate Joel.
Okay, nomination for Joel, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Nick. Do we have a motion that nominations cease?
So, oh I can't.
You can't make that one.
I'll do it.
Alright, we have a motion to nominate nomination cease and a unanimous ballot be cast for Joel Shoemaker as vice chair. Do we have a second on that? Thanks Aaron. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, motion to approve, do we have monthly claims then, right?
Yes.
Slipped in there? Okay, motion to approve the monthly camp claims as presented in your packet. Thank you Aaron, second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carry. Alright, motion to make, uh, our official news, okay, how many do I have to, can I do?
One motion for nominations.
Okay.
This will go through...
Number what?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
But Tom, make sure you look at this because some of them if we don't, you know, I might not have the notes in here if it was, so make sure you look at the agenda please.
Okay, do we have a motion to designate the official newspaper as the reporter and farmer, make the depository of funds Dakota Bank, First Interstate Bank, Core Trust Bank, and South Dakota FIT, custodian of all accounts, Lorie O'Farrell, business manager, person authorized for state and federal programs, Dr. Block. Appoint approval officers for school food service application and hearing officials, which would be Dr. Block, Lorie O'Farrell, and Gakowski's name is still there.
He did it last year.
Would you still do it again Aaron?
Sure.
Great, alright. Appoint, uh, any, we'll come back to, uh... We need a member and two alternates to the N E S C. I'll go through them all and then we can come back, well, we might as well just do it just right now, so who wants to do N E S C?
Northeast Services Co-op is a monthly meeting, one Monday after.
Or it's the third Monday of each month. You can attend the meetings via Zoom, however, I think they're, they're pushing more towards live meetings again because of participation or lack of... But I don't think that's gonna be required, I think they're gonna make it work, they're just trying to encourage one of you to be a person. I've got a ZAR held in Watertown, I'm very interested.
I've got a lot of city council meetings on the first and then if they have other things, it ends up being the third Monday, it just doesn't, I'm usually busy on my Monday night list.
I will say that Martin attended a party in high because they're shorter than our names.
I, you know, I did it for many years, um, I think it's a good opportunity for, to learn about how a co-op works, I, I would gladly be an alternate, I think that, you know, when I was going, you and I had to make the trip every time, but the Zoom option I think would help. I would like to be an alternate.
It's important that we have somebody that is willing to do it and able to do it, um, I served on a committee of superintents, I was the large school representative, I did that for twelve years, so in the event that our board member was not president, I was always there, but that's not the case, I haven't done, I haven't done that, so... I would also like to be an alternate. So it's me, huh?
I did it for many years Nick, I, I mean, I'll take my turn, I just so not, but...
I'll step, I'll step in there.
Okay.
Awesome.
Great, alright, so we have Nick primary, uh, Shoemaker and Gakowski, alternates again. Alright, board of, appoint a member of, for the board of equalization, I'll do that again unless somebody else wants to do it. Okay, approve truancy officers, which would be Dr. Block and Mr. Case. Approve Title Nine and Five Oh Four coordinators, Title Nine would be Mr. Case, uh, Five Oh Four coordinator, Dr. Block. Designate the school attorney as Rodney Freeman. Purchasing agent, business manager, Lorie O'Farrell. Approve statement of assurances for federal programs. We will designate majority vote again for approval needed by a majority of all board members. In other words, if somebody ever wonders what that means, it has to be three to pass, if you had a board meeting where two were absent, all three would have to be in agreement, a two-one vote does not, uh, account for board action. Okay, appoint a person to invest and borrow funds in the name of the district, and that would be the business manager, Lorie O'Farrell. Set school board meetings for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six as the second Monday of each month at six P M, is everybody still good with the six P M time?
I like it.
Okay, any objections? Alright. Uh, interest generated may be transferred to the general fund. Allow a use of signature stamp, uh, for the business manager, the superintendent, and the school board president. Appoint, uh, committee assignments, favorite times here now. Negotiations, last year was Santis and Shoemaker, I'm, I'd like to step off, I think I've been doing negotiations six years in a row, uh...
I'm close behind you, um, I, I think that, uh, it'd be, it'd be, now's a good time though, but some of the other guys out there.
I'll do it, but I, I think there should be one holdover, I really do, but I'll step up, I'll do that one, there's some other ones I want to pass. Unless somebody else wants to.
Aaron, do you wanna take a, just a year, do it for a year?
I could, but I, I agree with Mark, I, I think one of you two should stick with it and, I, I could do it too, but it doesn't matter though.
I trust you guys.
I am.
I nominate Mark and Aaron.
I'll take my turn, take my meeting.
Okay, you good Aaron?
I'll follow Mark.
Alright, so we got, uh, Hanson and Gakowski. Professional practice and personnel was Shoemaker and Santis, I will do that again if you want me to.
I'll stay.
Okay, transportation was Gakowski and Luenga.
I can do it. Aaron, do you wanna do it again or?
Yeah.
Do you wanna, take what you want?
I kinda got my eye on the, the next one, but let's take that.
So we've got Hanson and Gakowski then on transportation. Okay. Buildings and ground, we had, uh, Dreva and Shoemaker, I don't mind doing a year there, since I'm off negotiations, I can take out one other one.
I need to take a step back on that one, just because we're gonna be involved in the demolition, so I think...
Yeah, I'll take mine, I'll step in there too.
Awesome.
Okay. Everybody good with the committees? Okay. Alright, uh, set salary, uh, for board members, which is seventy-five dollars per meeting. We all good? Okay, substitute rates. We are at one hundred and thirty dollars per day, long-term subs after ten days are one hundred and forty-five, or excuse me, one hundred and forty dollars.
Unless there's a certain, if they have a teaching certificate, then it's one one eightieth of the contract. But I do think we need to go up just a little bit for our substitute pay.
Because I saw the information you gave, wasn't Clark and Broton a little bit higher than us? Any recommendations?
I would say one thirty-five or one forty.
Comments?
You know, because I feel like when we, I feel like what we've done in the past is we increase and then we just hold it for a couple of years, so, you know, if you want to go to one forty and then just hold it for no increase next year. But I do have to tell you that, um, we spend a lot of money on substitutes.
And have we been able to, do we struggle to find them?
Some days it is a challenge. I rely more on our, our staff subbing a lot of times during their prep time than they will get paid during their prep times, so, so I know over the years I, I've utilized them a lot. Yeah, some days it's a, it's a challenge to find somebody when you need them all day, especially if he has to work, and I need to work, some days it's like that.
Alright gents, where do you wanna go, one thirty-five or one forty?
One forty.
Mark?
I don't care. If that's what we need to do.
Aaron?
I don't know that it's gonna solve the issue, but I think it'll help.
I agree, it might help.
Okay. Okay, uh, substitute rates, then we'll go to the one forty. Uh, set the mileage rate equal to the state rate. Allow the, uh, Dr. Block to advertise, uh, for personnel as openings occur in closed school due to inclement weather or other emergencies. All in favor of those twenty-two things that we just rattled off, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to set lunch and breakfast prices for the upcoming school year. Go. Thank you Joel, second? Thank you Aaron, discussion?
Um, I would like to recommend that we leave them as is for the coming year.
That's an easy call.
Who would fund this, fine?
Yeah, we're into financial condition on our food service company.
So move. Okay.
Sorry.
Alright, all in favor of leaving the prices, it was moved by Mark, second by, uh, Gakowski, all in favor of leaving the prices as same for the upcoming school year, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to set meal reimbursement rates. Adult state, uh, rates are six, fourteen, and twenty, students are six, eight, and eleven. So, thank you Joel, second?
Second.
Thank you Nick, discussion?
Again, I recommend that we leave these the same.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Alright, motion to, uh, set admission prices. Thank you Aaron, second?
Second.
Joel, discussion?
I recommend that we leave them the same.
I do too, when I travel around, I, I feel like we're competitively crazed and...
I think we might even be a little bit unchained.
I, I think we are, I think we are.
It is, but I just, I feel that when you want people to come to the game, you know, you bring a family across the lot and they spend concessions, it's just better to keep it low.
I agree. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to set armory key card prices. So move. Thank you Joel, second?
Second.
Thank you Nick, discussion?
I think we should...
First of all, what are they?
So they are right now a hundred dollars for just the armory, two hundred dollars for the armory and the weight room, and they go reduced after July first.
I guess I'm of the opinion that these... I feel like we're in competition where businesses are down. And if you're taking taxpayer dollars to kind of be in competition, I think that's a little bit iffy, but I think we should be comparable priced or not quite severely undercutting those businesses that pay those factory owners.
I agree Aaron. I think we should, uh, I'll throw out there, I think that we should leave the armory prices for families with students. But if, if you're Joe Blow and you do not have a student in the district, then I think there should be a increased amount.
I, I agree Aaron, with your analogy, I think we need to just take a step back and, and for many years, we weren't in competition because, you know, the armory's kind of more of the weightlifting, uh, squat racks, bench press and that sort of a thing. And more recently, I think we, there's been new business that's come to town that we're maybe competing with, um, you know, but it's my understanding that for a hundred years or, you know, twenty, thirty years, it's been, that's been a, a community weight room and community members have donated the equipment to go in there, so really, you're, you're leasing a space. So I don't, I don't think we've been competing with other businesses in town until more recently, I think we should go up in price to stay competitive. With that, I don't think there should come an expectation of anything from the district other than what those patrons are already getting, you know, for a service down there, I don't think that, that by increasing the fee, we're trying to stay competitive, but there's gonna be no increase in service, you know? If, the way I look at it, uh, the other thing is, in my opinion, I think we should raise the weight room portion of it, but I think the army portion of it should possibly stay the same.
I, I agree with that a hundred percent, I mean, the armory is not, somebody else has a facility, there's no business model has an armory out there, it's just the weight part, the exercise equipment, stuff like that.
I think there's a lot of people that walk in the armory in the mornings, especially during the winter months.
But the armory during the school day is open, people don't have to pay to use it during school hours because it's unlocked, so anybody can go in there during most hours and walk.
Okay. So...
I just wanna make sure everybody knows that.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, I, I, to me, raise the weight room, but the armory side of it, I don't want to deter students, like what you mentioned, or, you know, retired ease that want to utilize the facility for walking, that's what the facility is there for, so I feel like we should leave the armory part... Or you know, retired ease that want to utilize the facility for walking, that's what the facility is there for, so I feel like we should leave the armory part of it alone and just raise the weight.
But, and really when you get looking into this, I mean, maybe we need to make a more detailed policy, but I think one of the issues we have to do is make sure that somebody doesn't get a weight room key and then bring in five people with you.
Yeah.
I think that is an issue right now. I think we might have to look at maybe looking at our policy a little bit more and enforcing that, I think that is something. The other thing.
How do you enforce that? I mean, because that, I mean, that's what, that's what our, we want, that's what we have, you know, that's supposed to be happening, but how do you enforce that?
You check the cameras.
Well, I think the other thing maybe what we do is we just keep a roster of names that are actually there, because I mean, I think there is, I think there is a significant number that do that.
I agree.
How would you police it?
I mean, you know, if somebody reports it to us, then we can check the cameras, but I mean, we aren't going to have somebody down there.
No, but I think that, but as long as we have, having the policy and enforcement are two different things. One, we got to have a policy that says, hey, if you're bringing, if Tom Santas doesn't have any students in the district anymore and we were to increase the value of the weight room. And then he brings in five other guys with him, Tom Santas' key card has to be at risk at that point in time. Something, I mean, something needs to be done.
To me, it could just be a one-page deal, hey, look, here's a refresher, here's our rules. And do we need to have a, hey, my buddies are coming to town for the weekend and we want to use the gym and it's fifteen dollars a time or something.
Right. Maybe we should have day passes or week passes. Because I do see people that come in there and they're only there for three or four days and then they're trying to find somebody's key to get in.
How do you propose activating and deactivating on a monthly basis?
I don't know, is that, is that, can you come and can you buy a key and can it be for a certain?
Five, but every time you do that, you would have to activate it.
And then we might not get the key called back because we have to pay for each one of them.
And maybe that's the part where we don't need to compete with the market. They can accommodate a day rate. Why do we need to?
That's good.
Yep.
Yep. So what are you proposing Aaron?
I think you should be accountable to what, I don't know what they get.
And I don't either.
Because otherwise you're undercut by the tax.
So we're currently at two hundred for the weight room pass. I'll throw out four hundred.
Right here.
Clear here. So that's less than. Come on, it's thirty-four.
Look at your math, I put four hundred.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Thirty-four.
Whoever probably is quite a bit more than that.
Where's that?
I don't know, but a gym pass or, but it gets a lot more now. So I, I didn't, I didn't know it was that big a deal on the family.
But I think, or you think we'd leave it the same for the students though, correct?
I think students, yeah.
Yeah. Families with students and just for non-families without students. So you're.
So I mean, do many students go in and lift on their own versus now that we have a weightlifting program?
I think it just depends on the kids, I mean, there's a lot of kids down here, but you're also seeing a lot of the different kids in that weight room, I mean, I'll, I'll see a lot of kids in the weight room when I drive by at night.
I think there's kids that are doing, oh, you know, they're doing Tyler's program and they'll go in there after about, you know, after whatever.
This is what they, each person gets now, that's our, when they call in the application, so we did.
Now, it doesn't say on here though that I can't bring in.
Right, we can add a line.
I think we need to add in a line that says, because I do think there are people that are bringing in. Quite a few.
And then if it's reported to us, we can call them or whatever and.
At least try it.
And that gets signed the first time, if that's not an annual thing, I mean, it's once you sign, sign, sign the contract in.
Annual, you do sign it in annual, okay.
There's a fair amount of paperwork trail starting to get around sometimes a little bit.
And with those fobs, you could tell, I mean, if anything happened, you could tell who was there at what time, right?
You can tell which fob was activating the sensor and if you go to the cameras, you can verify if that person had the fob, was the right person or if there's five people came in with one fob. But you'd have to go back from the cameras. Cameras are wonderful, but I can speak on his behalf, my behalf, they're very, very, very time consuming. Unless we know the incident and the approximate date of time and the place that it happened, especially in this building, we've got sixty-plus cameras, so. If we can't narrow it down, I don't have time to sit for an afternoon to check out something that happened in all that, I don't know.
There'd have to be something more than just doors. On a fishing expedition, how many fobs do we have out?
Well, I have that. Right now, we have eighty-nine out and seventy-seven of them have access to the weight room. And that's not including coaches or just going in. It's just, yeah.
Alright, so Aaron threw out four hundred dollars.
Joel did.
Joel did? Okay.
Yep.
Aaron? What did you think of that then?
I thought it was a little low, but it's, it's better.
Okay. Any other numbers we want to consider?
I don't have a feeling on this one.
Nick?
Yeah, I think, I think increasing is good, let's maybe try it, I don't, I'm open to it.
Are you leaving the armory at one hundred then?
The armory at one hundred, it was, I think your proposal then, four hundred, four hundred was at the weight room. And that's for non-student families, correct?
Correct.
Student, it doesn't change. That's still the two hundred.
Families.
Families. So if Nick Fosheim has students, he'd still be at the two hundred dollar level. Okay. Any other discussion? Does that make sense Lori?
It, it does make sense, when is this going to take effect? Because you know, we've already had people pay January through June, so should we have it take effect January first?
January first. Okay.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, and we're going to add that provision in there then too Lori, but only the individual owner. Okay. Motion to approve the contract of Nick Lesnar as junior high football coach. Uh, thank you, was that Aaron, second?
Second, go ahead.
Okay, thanks Nick, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to.
Can we do two separate motions to handle these?
Okay.
Number one and number two.
Motion to add two days to the elementary school counselor's contract, one hundred and eighty days to one hundred and eighty-two days. Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you, discussion.
We are in favor as an administration, we believe this certainly.
And the high school counselor is already, has, the high school counselor already has additional days, the elementary counselor has not.
And keep in mind she is also the district test coordinator, so a lot of time spent.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to add a cross-country coach to this year's roster. So, thank you Joel, second.
Second.
Okay. Second, Nick, discussion. What, what do we, you got twenty new kids coming out, is that what?
Nathan Bloom brought this forward, he is requesting an assistant coach because they had a meeting before the end of the year and they had twenty students show interest. Now, I don't know if you want to put something, you know, stipulation that we have to have this many, because we, just because they show interest, we don't know if that many are going to sign up.
I would agree with that, there needs to be, we need to stipulate this instead of, let's see what the actual. Yeah, contingent on actual.
Does the head coach?
Yeah, but if we hire the coach now, then you're.
Correct.
Well, if we intend on the number of suites that go out, perhaps you could do that.
So we won't have a contract until.
I made the motion.
Yeah, but you did.
I want to edit that motion.
Okay.
Our first meeting in August is August tenth. What's the date of the first cross-country practice, does anybody know?
They should know about cross-country practices, don't they?
No, I think they just.
You know who's interested, but you never, you never know that until the, you know, you have a meeting right before practice actually starts.
How many, maybe the first day or second day.
I would modify the motion to contingent upon twenty plus students participating.
Do we think we could find volunteers that, like we do a football rest. So is it the fact that if you got so many kids there, you need to have an additional coach or is it just, I mean, as far as, you know, watching or is it?
I would say it's all, I would say it's supervision, I would say it's, you know, when you go to like cross-country meets, you have, you know, like a junior high girls race, a junior high boys race, a varsity girls, and you know, it's, the head coach is probably.
I don't have a coaching one in my packet, do we have a head and an assistant currently, or just a head?
We used to have a head and an assistant and then we went down to just a head only due to numbers.
So we currently have a head only?
Yes.
I'm good with my motion.
What did you have last year, you know, how?
I think it was a large number, I think that's why they're requesting it for this year. I don't know the exact numbers, but I'm sure.
Because I want last year, it was a big number, didn't really work.
I just think it's not difficult, like the supervision and.
Yep.
So Joel, what exactly is your motion again?
To approve hiring an assistant coach if there are twenty or more athletes in the cross-country program.
Okay. Do we have a second as to that motion?
Is that on the assistant coach?
No, the head coach.
Yeah, it's there, so it's, it's. It's at the top. Oh, are you listening?
Sure. Yep.
Maybe listen page.
Not my fault.
Oh, she's a.
Well, I just, I saw that. It's in the general fund.
Oh.
Just where we have budgeted for the program.
So what are you going to do, do you have a, I mean.
We have a head coach.
No, but I mean, who's going to be?
Yeah, they have someone in mind, they have, we have someone that.
You do have someone that's interested?
Nathan does.
Alright, do we have a second on that?
That was contingent on the number.
Contingent on there being twenty plus athletes.
Second.
Second, Aaron, alright, discussion. All in favor of hiring an assistant cross-country coach if there are over twenty student athletes? Say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Motion to approve the contract with Redlingers rerouting the pipes in the north hallway. So move. Thank you Joel, second. Thank you Aaron, discussion. Isn't this what we discussed at last meeting, I mean, that you were going out to get the bids or we've been?
We did, but we didn't realize that it was going to be as high as this and Lori thought we better put this on here because of the bid limit being a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
This is still part of the whole process of rerouting or relocating the pumps. And as, as we need to when we do demolish that building, the pipes that come from the new boiler room actually go in the ceiling on the north side of the gymnasium, which will be an exterior space. Those pipes can't remain there in the south for the winters, so they have to be rerouted into the gymnasium over to the new pump room. So it's all a combination of getting the old pumps upstairs and connecting it to the old boiler, well, the new boiler room via the gymnasium.
So, this is not part of the bid?
No, no, our electrical and our plumbing is above beyond the bid.
And we have no clue what this is going to be?
Well, we have a, we have a quote of a hundred and twenty thousand.
But.
This, this project, this.
We're going to have more of these coming.
Plus our unknowns.
Um, there's not going to be a huge amount of them because we've, we've talked about all of the things that have to happen, so I have, I do have quotes or estimates on all of the known things that have to happen, for instance, bringing the pumps up, putting in the floor drain, rerouting these. So, so, I mean, we've had sick millers kind of coordinate everything, so they know electrical, plumbing, HVAC, mechanical, all of those things. We know what needs to be done in order for me to complete this project. There could be some unknown.
And we knew this as a board going into it, we made the decision to, it's a process, you got to do these certain things at certain times. And we couldn't, upon recommendation of the architects, take that to bid, we needed to parcel that out and do some of these things. Kind of self-contracting what we're doing and save a money.
I'm confident in saying that we know what we need to do and we have the quotes on those. The unknown part is if they get into a wall and there's something unexpected, then there's some unknown there. We are, we know what we need to do, where the pipes need to go and how they connect to the new pumps and all that stuff. And I have quotes on those items.
That would only, I mean, the unknowns would only be in this building, right? Not in the part that's getting torn down, because that all has been.
That's all part of the project. I don't know what happens if there's a significant unknown.
I, I guess where I'm going with, where I'm going with this is, we already know this now, they haven't even started, why was it in the, in, in, it, in the bid? Because it's, should have been bid, I mean.
Because it was a continuation of relocating the pumps, we felt we wanted to stay with the same company and continue it. Because they've done half of the work already.
There's also been a long process too, we knew at one point in time, okay, we're changing out the boiler, we have to change out plumbing pipes. Okay, so then if you recall, we had the meetings, remember where we looked where all the pipes were at and we walked down those hallways? And then even after we got done, when we were first doing it, there was at a point in time we were going to try to keep the building up for the next year or two. Then when we got the insurance non-renewal, we expedited some of these things, so I mean, it makes sense, it would be nice if we did not have to do it, of course, but I think we have to do it.
It makes sense to us to have been part of the process the whole time, but.
Most of the electrical work, we've been piecemealing here, I mean, Aaron, you went through that, how many board meetings ago was that, that we went and had big, long, extensive discussion about the electrical work? Three, four months ago? Five months, I mean, we've gone pretty in-depth on all of these different pieces. I just think it has to be done.
I think timing has played a huge role in some of these things, Mark. You know, the unknowns and, and like you said, the insurance non-renewal, because we thought we were going to be able to use it another year and, but we consciously made the decision. the decision to do the electrical and the mechanical in-house. The same contractor, because they, they own the project and the process.
And it is really a continuation of what they have started. It's, it's not like it's a completely separate project. It's, it's now rerouting the pipes that have to be connected, which we knew we were going to have to do. But we had to start it before we could really get some bid process involved. And the, the initial part wasn't above the bid limits, so.
I just don't know if there's any other options.
And this has to be done before demo takes place, so.
Now, we did, we did go through last year without heating that, that entire facility. But that north hallway, we had enough residual heat and it was not an issue. Because those pipes were not insulated up in that ceiling, but there was enough residual heat from the hallways that it, it never became an issue.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, uh, we also have to, do we have to review the open meeting laws as an action item or we just can just say we did?
We'll have another discussion of the.
Okay. All right. Superintendent, report, Dr. Block.
Okay. I have a handful of things on here, so. The first thing that I want to mention is, Beyond to College is an ACT prep that we have been participating in, or we, we pay a, a subscription to it. And we've been doing this for about four or five years, maybe longer than that already. It is a neat program. We have a couple of teachers that have utilized it in their core courses, math and English. We are going to, as a state, have the ACT as the standardized test for all of the juniors. So this is going to become an oxymoron for me to discuss this and provide the suggestion that I have, but I've got a good justification. The state provides an ACT prep through, I don't know if it's through my South Dakota life for students, but I've gone through that, a review of that with Chelsea Larson, our high school counselor. Beyond to College program, which I thought was being used extensively by our students. It has been used by our staff in encouraging it and trying to utilize it. But I went through in May to determine how many students had been utilizing it. And there's different categories. There's college and career readiness, middle school matters, the pre-ACT for middle school students, the PACT for high school students, PSAT and the SAT, and then study skills. The only numbers that I believe were justifiable were the ones in which our teachers were utilizing those, those amounts. The sad situation is if we're leaving it up to our students, you're looking at three kids that are accessing this, forty kids total in the last two years for the PSAT total in the last two years. The pre-ACT, which is the, the test that most of our students take and now will all take as juniors, there's forty-three students that have used it in the last two years. And when I say use it, that means they've just logged on. I can't tell how long they're on it or anything like that. I just don't see the justification of us spending twenty-five, twenty-six hundred dollars a year for this program when it's not being utilized. We have English teachers and math teachers that are utilizing it and trying to encourage it, but it's, it doesn't seem to be carrying over. I really believe that with what the state provides for free and the fact that the entire state is going to be ACT, the majority of the school districts are going to rely on that ACT program. And I feel confident, like she showed me, that it's, it's a quality program. So my suggestion is that we, we just let the subscription go. It's a minor amount of money, but twenty-six hundred bucks. And I, I'm just really disappointed in what I saw for the numbers in May.
Forty-three kids out of two years, is it really that bad? Because how many kids are actually going on to college versus going CTE or into the direct workforce? Are we at about a fifty-fifty?
Well, that's, that's not a bad point you're making is, is when you're looking at the number of students that are going to college versus.
I mean, if there's only twenty-two going to college each year, you know, that would be about forty-four, you know, right in there. I mean, to me that, I was really impressed this year. I think I counted, this year's graduating class had fourteen students. Wasn't that the number?
So what I will tell you, I.
And I get every kids, every class is different, but.
I have access to student scores for the ACT. So I know who's knocked it out of the park, who's doing well, who's not doing so well. Our kids that are knocking it out of the park, they are using this. I can tell you that.
But that was.
A little, there were some, but I was surprised to see the lack of those student names on this list or the, the infrequency on this list for those that were really going on.
The comment you made a minute ago, you said if we're leaving it up to the students, only then we got the numbers. So are we leaving it up to the students?
Our English teachers and our math teachers are encouraging this and are utilizing it, but beyond the classroom, kids aren't utilizing it. I mean, we can't force them to use it.
Why not?
I don't know how, well, I guess, I suppose we could probably.
But we try to force kids to do homework, but.
How are you going to force them to do it? Are they aware of it?
The students? Yeah, I do believe they are. Because we utilize it in, in the guidance that they do in middle school and we also utilize it in, in the English and math classes.
But you know, all it takes is one student to get a twenty-three to a twenty-four and the program more than pays for itself. I really think, so Jamie was on, I mean, personally me, I think Jamie was on the right track when he found that program. To me, it also goes to the parents. If your kids are going to college, you should be asking your kids, are you getting on to this site? Are you using this site? Maybe we have, last year's class, maybe someone used it, didn't, but either way, fourteen students. I do remember years where, I mean, we had board discussions that we only had a couple of students. And remember, everybody was still getting As in those classes. That was part of the, the conversation. And so.
Well, I was around here when we brought this on and I remember we went from here to I thought we really saw improvements. Did we not in those early years? I know what the argument is, maybe it was a different class.
Over the length of my career, I would say that you have competitive classes academically and you have less competitive. And when you see those peaks and valleys, it generally has to do with, we have students that do well on the ACT every single year and that's a great thing. And some of them probably do utilize this as well as other preps that they can, they can Google and find. And there's others that they can pay for, but, but it really does come down to, and I hate to say it, it comes down to competitive classes. That's, that's just the reality of it now. We've had some years where we want to brag all we want to brag about as much as we can about the ACT scores because we've got a really competitive class. You might have fifteen kids out of forty that are, you know, twenty-two and above. And then there's other years where you still have your top students, but it's only three or four out of thirty-five and the rest aren't doing so well on the ACT. Some of that does have to do with the courses that they take, because we do have some kids that take the ACT that haven't taken the college prep. We're going to have to address that, not address it, but we're going to have to take that into consideration when we're looking at ACT scores in the future. Because all of the students that are going to a career tech ed pathway are going to take the ACT. All of the students that want to just go off the work field are going to take the ACT. All of the students that are going to go to the military are taking the ACT now. So we have to look at their prep with what their score is and try to make some sense of, of that.
You know, I'm all for saving money, but boy, twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred bucks, I'd like to still drive one more year at least. And if your parent, if your kids are juniors or sophomores, they need to be looking at this. Because I think also what, one of the things, our parents aren't looking at college scholarships until they are seniors and then the time has passed. But, but when you get to the, the four-year schools, it's, twenty-four is just the initial offer. If you start getting a twenty-six or a twenty-eight or a thirty, your scholarships from those schools go up significantly also. And, you know, I know that there's students that are out there that are like at a twenty-seven, they try to get it up to the twenty-eight. I've seen those kids that are twenty-nine try to get it up to thirty. I think that for twenty-five hundred bucks, I'd like to see us one year, but get it out to the parents. Maybe it should be getting out more in that sophomore, junior. Cause it's really only about those two years, correct Jim? Maybe as they're going into their senior year.
And their sophomore year, most, most students are taking the ACT. Some are doing it in the fall of their junior year, but a lot of them are starting that in the spring of their junior year, the testing dates during that time. And we have students that take them multiple times. I mean, we have some students take three, four times.
That's just my.
I, I don't want to go against your recommendation, Dr. Block, but I, Jesus, it just seemed like when we did that, we were high-fiving the improvements. Maybe I'm recollecting that wrong, but it seemed like we saw improvements. I think we do just need to get the word out, but we don't hear nothing?
Yeah.
Ask it next year.
What does the prep look like if they're all, if all juniors are taking it? What's that prep look like in the classroom?
It's not the entire semester. It's like Mrs. Gangly will use as an example, and she teaches junior English. What she normally does is she knows when there's testing dates coming up, she will integrate that into whatever they're doing at that particular time. Or even in some cases, she will truncate what they're doing and stop for a moment and, and for several days, look at ACT prep for the English portion of it. And so, so it's not the entire year and it's difficult to teach the ACT test the entire year. So.
You think about it, last, according to the twenty-three, twenty-four profile, only twenty-four students in Webster took the ACT. So if we're having a forty-three look at it, we're probably between.
Is that student count or is that student?
Says number tested.
Number tested, okay.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four and they took it multiple times.
Yeah.
I, you know, I'm writing notes down here, parent notification awareness. We can increase the, the awareness and the usefulness of it, maybe do something in home rooms here and there, something like that. But I do know that the state has a, a pretty good program for ACT prep that obviously is going to be utilized far more now statewide because we're, we're doing what we're doing as a state.
And so maybe that'll help improve the state program to get it up. Better than it was seven, eight years ago when we did buy it though.
I just looked at it and thought, I, I would say we, we had a, a pretty good year with ACT scores this year. And I was disappointed to see the numbers as sparse as they were as well as knowing specifically the, some of the scores of students and their names not being on here for accessing this very much. It was very limited. So that was where I was coming from. It's just like, I don't know if we're really getting our money's worth with this.
Does it, do we start, when does the subscription start again?
It'll start in July.
In July.
So for the next year.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is we continue on.
One more year.
Okay. The next thing I have is South Dakota DOE information. I think I, I may have forwarded this to you as an email. I don't know, I can't remember if I did, but the federal government, U.S. Department of Education has paused the allocations for funding in these particular areas. It's migrant student education, supporting effective instruction. I talked to Lori, that's got a little bit to do with our REIT funds, twenty-first century community grants or learning centers. That has now been funded since this first email came out. So that third bullet, that funding exists. And then English language acquisition. So there's not a ton of money associated with these, but there is, you know, some, some, it could have some effect on some of our students. We don't have a lot of migrant students. We don't have a lot of EL students, but we do have those students. And so I just wanted you folks to be aware that we still have heard from the state level that any funding that we really are dependent on for a larger number of students, that's not in jeopardy. You've probably heard that too, Lori, that your business managers, we're not in any panic for, you know, like Title funding, Title I or anything like that, so.
Right, and those applications have been submitted. Like we do not receive funding for migrant student education or E, or English language. There are two Bs on here that affect us and I'm guesstimating, it's probably like twenty thousand dollars, but they think that it's coming, so hopefully, that's not going all differently.
So the next vote that I have is the juvenile justice seminar. This came up out of the blue and that is why I was not at the Roslin meeting last week. It truly came up about a week prior to this. The juvenile justice seminar was in place and I'm not sure who, who put it on, but the superintendent from West Central, Cook Central, and the assistant superintendent from Sioux Falls had all planned to attend. And somebody had just expressed a, an invitation to all superintendents across state. Well, there were six of us that were there. And I will say that the morning sessions was not quite what I was expecting when I looked at the agenda. And I, I kind of expected to go down there and learn some things about what trends we're seeing with juvenile justice issues, things like that. The morning sessions were folks who either had been incarcerated and, and released, some that were, whether they weren't getting incarcerated, that were still, that were there because they wouldn't be there if they're in prison. But family members are folks who have been incarcerated. And that kind of, I think the legislators that were participating in this were kind of looking for information regarding the, the prison system, the new prison, what's justified, what's not. And so that was enlightening, but it really wasn't what I was going there for. And then in the afternoon, we met at McCrossen's Boys Ranch. And I had taken a tour of that probably about thirty years ago, so it's been a long time. And it has changed some. McCrossen's is actually, I think, a very successful program down there. And it was nice to, to, to tour that. We got to see their educational building, the barn, the entire campus. They have a hundred and forty acres of property there. They pay, they, you know, they build their own homes, they create things like that. So it was, it was a nice review of that. And then there were other service providers similar to McCrossen's that were there to share how their programs work and how students qualify for that. Unfortunately, there were not any significant solutions to our juvenile justice shortcomings. When I say shortcomings, we basically have no juvenile justice system. Mr. Case and I turn over parents and students to the state's attorney regarding that truancy every single year. And I'm not saying our state's attorney is doing nothing, but he really has nothing he can do. We are trying to basically encourage parents and force parents as much as we can without being able to force them to get their kids to school. And probably our best bet is what you do, Tom, every year and say, parents, it is your job to get your kids to school. It's your job. That's, that's your number one responsibility. So it was disappointing that there isn't any solution, but I think the legislators kind of took it into account as to what we say as administrators. I used an example for when I came to Webster in two thousand and one, twenty-four years ago, we had a probation officer that came from Sisseton and a probation officer that came from Aberdeen every single Wednesday. They would do UA tests for the kids that were busted for drugs. They would check attendance, they would check behavior, they would check grades. And so we as a school provided, I thought, a really good structure for these kids if they were willing to conform to that structure. And then this system provided even that other structure for everything outside of school because we can't control them outside of school. And obviously, in most of these cases, the parents and the family structure was not providing any of that structure. I'm being critical of that, but that's the reality. And that all disappeared, I don't know, seven, eight years ago when the state decided to kind of eliminate the juvenile justice system. Now, they can brag about statistics saying those all, those statistics went down. Well, they went down because we're not keeping them anymore. They don't exist anymore. I mean, and I'm not trying to be critical of anybody, but that's the reality, folks. And so that, that part was a little bit disappointing. We don't have any, we don't have solutions and I don't know if they're going to see solutions because it all costs money. That costs money. Those services and those resources cost money. So we all said as administrators, we, we'd like to see something like that. And they, they talked about repealing whatever recent bill it was, I don't know, six, eight years ago. You want us to repeal it? So that's a start, but we still want the services and the, and the resources to help take care of these kids that hopefully we can keep in our district, but if they get to where we can't handle them, we need someplace to, to send them so that we're not incarcerating too many people. And that reflected on what we discussed in the morning. And that reflected on what we discussed in the morning, so. Um, there's one more point I was going to make.
So, yeah, in regards, uh, regards to tardies and attendance, uh, we do have a committee in place, staff members, so we're looking at what can we do as a district to increase attendance? So we're looking at some incentives, things like that, so. Yeah, we're going to try everything that we can to make sure that the attendance is.
You know, that, that's crazy. That's a solution looking, that's not on us. Get your kids to school. I mean, you know, there's nothing wrong with us sitting up here as a board and telling you, it's not the superintendent, the principal's job to get your kids to school. It's your parents' job. Come to school. I mean, that's just common sense. And if you don't like to hear that, tough, quote me in the newspaper on it, send your kids to school.
It's the law.
It's, it's just common sense.
So the, the final comment that I would make regarding that, um, I, I was enlightened, but I was also disappointed. The biggest disappointment that I will say happened in the entire day was the, the, the number of legislators that were there, and I don't know them, they're from other districts, that are so pro homeschooling. I tell you what, public education is under attack in South Dakota when it comes to funding. And I'm not saying by these folks. They, they choose to homeschool their kids, and that's a great thing for some families, but um, yeah, I, I'm concerned for the remainder of my, my, uh, my career, and I'm concerned for my grandkids now, when it comes to public education. Because I truly believe, and it's what I've done my entire life, we educate all. And if we have that philosophy, that everybody should educate their own and do homeschooling or, or whatever it is, what about those that don't have that home? Then we're, we're saying to those kids, "You don't matter and you don't get the same opportunities that, that kids who, who have parents can homeschool do." And I just don't agree with that. I never will, and I'm not going to apologize for that, that philosophy. I believe in public education. It's who I am. I believe in it.
Because I mean, I'm going to give you a great example, Nick. I've told it numerous times, but um, saw a kid in juvenile court and his dad says, you know, "Now that we started homeschooling him, he's doing great." Things are going well. Don't have any problems. And the state's attorney asked this fourteen-year-old kid, thirteen-year-old, I don't remember, "So what was the hardest assignment you did last week?" He said, "That Sudoku puzzle that Dad gave me." That was his assignment. It was a Sudoku puzzle. That's not homeschool. That, I mean, and we're going to now fund homeschooling? I mean, we're worried about people falling behind and students falling behind and not doing things, then we're going to fall. There's going to be an incentive not to send your kids to school because you can get paid.
Now, in defense of the folks that do homeschool and they.
Do a nice job.
They do a great job, but the unintended consequences that come with providing funding and providing the means for those folks, um, I, I just think it has detriment to, to society as a whole. I really, really, really do. Um, yeah, anyway. Um, I will be a proponent of public education my entire life.
Well, we're all here. We're, we are.
That's why you're here.
That's where, why we're all here, but I think this is outside of South Dakota, homeschooling. South Dakota does a pretty good job. There's.
It's changed now, Mark. You know, you, you know, now you can be homeschooled and you can come and participate in band. Remember we made it before you had to be in.
Yeah, that's, I'm a little out of that loop. That's.
Now you get to, you get to participate in all activities and we can't require you to ever show up in the building.
But it gets, it's coming.
Some of the questions that it posed at our meetings. Okay, if a kid, um, homeschools in my district, but then they decide to participate in a high school, I call them diploma meals, and I wish the state would regulate those a little bit more. In another quote, public school district where they can, they can take the credits through that school, um, can they participate in this district or do they participate in that district? I mean, it's just such craziness. It's like, you either, you're here or you're not.
That's open enrollment wasn't, that was a bad, so, matter of fact.
And we as a district, um, like I said, I've been here a long, we as a district, our board several years ago made a statement that said, "We will not allow, um, homeschool students to participate unless they are at least a half-time student." I think is what our policy was. And that we had to revoke that because the state legislatures said, "No, homeschool students can participate in anything." So Mr. Case and a fourth grade teacher can have a student show up for, "Where do you guys go for fourth grade?" Down to Des Moines?
Des Moines.
They can show up that morning and say, "This is little Johnny. He's a fourth grader, and that's his name. It's Johnny. Get on the bus." And we can't deny that. We don't even know the kid.
Doesn't happen very much.
That's a little bit extreme because they come for, for, uh, field trips. But I, maybe we have had some that we know and they do go on field trips.
Yeah, another one would be, well, they want to participate just in math or just in science. Then scheduling that kind of makes the conflict period there, so they, they can't pick and choose which curriculum they want to.
The next bullet that I have is a calendar plan. We're working on in-service dates, back-to-school, back-to-school barbecue. Uh, homecoming is set. We've got that. It is a little bit earlier this year, um, but I think it's going to be manageable for us to do it. So we, yeah. Mr. Case and the teachers will all be back within about three weeks, four weeks, two weeks.
Right around the corner.
Summer's going fast. It is going fast.
Okay. Anything else for Dr. Block? Principal report, Mr. Case.
Uh, I don't have much. Um, at an upcoming board meeting, we will have a resignation for a parent professional. So I have opened that up and I do have some applicants, which is good. So we plan to have some interviews this week already, and I hope to have that filled by the start of the school year. Um, other than that, driver's ed, I completed that. Mr. Bloom will be done hopefully tomorrow. And, uh, yeah, otherwise I don't have a whole lot to share right now. This one.
Anything for Mr. Case? Thank you, Mr. Case. NESC?
Mark's not here and I don't participate, so I think I, yeah.
Okay, next month. Buildings and grounds?
Um, I do have a couple of things here. Demolition updates. Um, we're looking at probably October when we see some significant trucks on the, on the site. As for getting the building prepped, we are, we're moving along quite well. We're, um, if, I, I would invite you to take a walk down there when you have, if you can't do it tonight, but stop in sometime. Um, the majority of the contents are, are removed in the majority of the, the facility. I would say that there's just a few things left in the, the old wood shop. And the weight room downstairs, we haven't addressed that yet. Um, we'll do that here shortly. We are considering, uh, actually not considering, we are planning to move the school weight room to the classroom down in the army, but it's, it is a much smaller room, um, shorter ceiling. So there's some, some adjustments we're going to have to make when we do that. There is a chance we'll have to put some stuff in storage for weightlifting, um, determine what's, what's useful years from now.
Um, I would just like to say that Mr. Block, he has had some help a little bit, but he has done most of that work, and I really don't believe that any other superintendent in the state of South Dakota would do what he has done this summer. It is.
I, I took a walk with Dr. Block today, and I was here about two or three weeks ago, and I couldn't believe the progress that was made. And I asked him, "Who's doing this?"
It's him. He's injured.
I got one.
Well, it's Joe's fault because when we did the pre-construction, he goes, "Jimmy, you got to get this stuff out of here." And I'm like, "Okay."
No, I think I specifically remember saying, "You need help. We need to get you help."
No, I'm kidding, Joe.
Okay. Well, but you have, and he's done it. Lori's absolutely spot on. It's amazing the progress that's been made.
So Derek Avery comes in for a couple of hours every day in the morning, and that's, that's kind of what we do. The two-man stuff, I go with him, we get it done. Um, Mike Niki, we have, we requested his assistance up here. He's done a lot with his own skid steer and his dump trailer. Um, and we had custodians help, the entire staff, you know, after their vacations and this and that, everything else. We had the custodians help last weekend. Holy cow, we moved, when, when you got five people going, we moved a lot of stuff in two days last week, so. Um, the ag shop had, the old ag shop had some stuff in it. Um, but for the most part, uh, yeah, it's, it'll be ready to go when we need it to go, so.
Lori, thanks for bringing that up. It's very important.
Summer projects, um, one of the things that we have going on in the elementary, we just had power shut off for all of last week. They shut it off a week ago Monday, a week ago today. And then just before I was coming to the board meeting tonight, I got a call from Troy at Schwan elect and said we've got everything powered up. So it's backed up. Um, for, well, Mark and Nick, um, one of the things that came out of our, um, we were required by the insurance company to do, uh, an inspection which included electrical inspection. And, um, it isn't just this building that we are planning to demolish that had issues. All of our original boxes in the elementary, which are three really large panels, there are four ceiling panels. They are original to the building in nineteen seventy, seventy-one and seventy-two. Um, there's been some water infiltration and some, some things that happened over the years. Uh, it, they just said, "We, you need to replace this stuff." Um, and so significant amount of money, I think it was about eighty thousand dollars for the three boxes that they went and replaced, but.
And I noticed that would be for labor. So it was, uh.
So it was, it was significant. Um, that is complete as of this evening, so.
Can I just ask a question about the, I mean, did they give us any notice that they were shutting the power off or?
Yeah, I knew, we did it from the, the staff of almost a full week ahead of time. Custodial staff, and we sent it out to the, uh, the, uh, the teachers via our calling system.
Well, I, I took quite a few complaints over that.
Oh, there were, um, yeah, we.
I've ended some basketball stuff and I've ended, uh, you know, uh.
We had some basketball, we had summer, summer classes. Um, yeah.
But the summer tutoring, they moved, right?
Yes.
We moved it to another part of the building.
Some of it, yeah.
It wasn't inconvenience, but he did say, "We got to do this." And, and he gave me a ballpark figure with a, or a ballpark, uh, data. And, and I just said, "Well, once you're kind of certain, let me know. I'd like to give people about a week's notice."
Sure.
Um, I want to say that we sent the notice out on Tuesday, a few weeks prior, so it wasn't a full week's notice, but.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Anything else, buildings and grounds? Okay. Review open meeting laws.
Um, this is just a new requirement starting this year that one time per year, it has to be recorded in our minutes that we have reviewed the open meeting laws. Um, the information was inserted in your packet, and so we've reviewed them and it will be in the minutes as per the law.
Okay. High school handbook updates.
So I did send a digital copy. I think I gave that to you, Lori, too. You guys were able to kind of review that. The digital copy has a lot of highlights. The, some of the yellow stuff is stuff that's just in grammatical things. Um, if it was in blue, it's maybe some proposals and/or concepts that I'm looking at changing. And a lot of this came through our, um, we use, we utilized two half-days of in-service in the spring with the secondary staff to kind of talk about things that were, um, we're seeing trends with students and attendance, tardies, and just try and figure out how can we, we better manage the students and, and the policies. Some of it is, uh, I'm just going to be honest, is, is enforcement. Um, it's a matter of me making sure that I enforce it as a principal, um, and enforce it in a timely manner so it's, that it, uh, it's meaningful for the students. When I say that, I talk about, uh, tardies and attendance. I don't always have, uh, I'm not always right on it to, to let them know that they have a detention on number four for tardies and it might be number six, those types of things. Um, I, I have some things that I've put in here as suggestions, and I kind of did a little summary. But it is good to, for you to just read through the whole thing and kind of look at some things. There might be some things that you look at and say, "What? I didn't know that was our policy," or, "Hey, I think this is missing." Um, and, and we can consider anything that you got, but, um, arrival time to school, I just listed some days. I'll just kind of go through them. Page three, arrival time for school in order to participate. Right now it's the beginning of second block. Should we do it earlier? Should we say they got to be here by nine in order to participate in, in practices or? And I only say that because our first block is an eighty-five minute period. So if somebody, I'm just going to say, if somebody's planning on sleeping in because they had a game last night, um, and sleep in a good hour and a half or they got to be here. I, as a coach, took care of that. Um, I coached girls' basketball. I was not the boys' basketball coach, and this is out in Midland. And I, I told my girls, "You ever do that, when I have to be there to work, you better be there. You're not practicing tonight. You're not playing the next day." So, care of me. Uh, so if it's, it's, if it's athletics that you can take care of as a coach. But our coaches need to know that those kids aren't here, and so that's, that's, that's kind of an enforcement thing. We let the coaches know that they're not, they're not showing up or they're making a trend of sleeping in after a game or.
It shouldn't be when school starts. We just got done saying, "Get your kids to school when school starts." I mean, I, I have no.
That's why I put it in here. I was like, well, right now. Beginning of second block, which is like nine, nine forty-five or nine fifty in the morning, so. Accumulation of tardies, he and I had this conversation today, and he's enforcing it differently than I have. In our policy at the, at the high school level, we start over tardies every single quarter. So they don't get a detention until number four or five in the first quarter, and then they get another four or five in the second quarter, another four. I'm like, "Do I have to keep count, count this every single quarter?" And then he said, "Well, we don't do that in middle school. There's this, the whole year." And so I, I really think for a change, it's going to go, for me, I'm going to suggest that we go from starting every quarter, at least starting the second semester. They're in different classes and different things like that, so there might be. But again, like Mark says, get here and get here on time, so. Some of these are suggestions that the staff made. I don't know if we'll look at changing the, the time between classes. Right now it's five minutes. It was suggested by a few people, maybe go to four minutes. We'd have to shift some things on schedule, but it's a very doable thing to do, but I don't know.
Is it too much time? People, what's the extra?
I think the reason for that suggestion is they believe that the kids are just kind of hanging out. They got five minutes, so they got plenty of time to hang out and talk and whatever. I don't know, four minutes is going to make a difference. Most of you will say, "We only have three minutes between classes. We have three stories to fill." All that stuff, so. But that is how it was in my school. We only had three minutes.
I don't think there is this hard on the tardies a little bit, though.
So, uh, the one about accepting credits, this is, um, we're seeing a few more students that are coming to us that have been homeschooled, and we do accept credits, but we don't home, accept homeschool credits where mom writes down, "This is what she's taking for classes." It needs to be from an accredited school or an accredited, uh, sort of educational provider that, that issues credits. And so it's just a formality to have in the, in the book. Seniors, we want them to be here for two full blocks, and the juniors, we would like them not to go home at all during their online courses, dual-credit courses. And the reason we say that is, our conversation with the staff is we really think that we're seeing, um, the immaturity of freshmen and sophomores extending and lasting longer than it used to. And what we, what we're kind of wondering is that we don't have the juniors and seniors in the building to be that, kind of that, as Mr. Mines would say, we're missing that pecking order. Not that we want, you know, kids bullying, seniors bullying freshmen. We're not seeing that pecking order where the, your upperclassmen are kind of your, your models for the younger kids. And, and I think there's some truth to that. Um, right now, what we've done in the last few years since COVID is if you were taking an online class and it was dual-credit, as long as you pass the first one of those, you can be gone. And so our seniors, we have some seniors that are only coming in one period a day in the fall, one period a day in the spring. And they're full-time students for us. The rest is all online. We want to hear at least two. That's what we're saying. And then the juniors, you don't get a break with online dual-credit classes until your senior year. Right now the juniors have to be here in the fall so they can prove they can handle a dual-credit class. And in the spring, we're allowing you, let seniors do it. We want to, we want to change that starting this year, so. And, and I do believe that if we really looked into it, we probably could see a change in our, our, um, in our atmosphere because we have fewer upperclassmen in the building. You know, even a, a look from an upperclassman like you doing, just a look, can make a difference with some of the young students. So GPA and course weight, um, Chelsea and I, as well as some staff members are looking. We want to just kind of clean that all up. It's been this way for a lot of years and, um, I, yeah. College credits, we give a hundred, uh, one point two-five credits for a three-credit class. And four, we want to try to prorate it, and if it's one-credit, we try to prorate it. There's just a lot of mess with ours. And then you also have the four point five for an A plus the one point two-five. Do we really need to wait the GPA points and the amount of credits? We're just thinking we need to clean this up. We would tier it in. We would tier it in so that, like, our seniors are going to be on the one that they were on before. We aren't going to shock anybody and say, "Okay, this is what you had last year, but you don't get this this year." We would tier it in with our students, with whatever we have. And I would just suggest you read through those options, and then I'll come to you with the ones that we think are best. Because Chelsea and I are going to have a little bit more conversation about this and look at the goals that we've accumulated. Substance abuse, you know, some of them are looking at, well, we want to see it, take some legal action. But the reality is, is if I have somebody who I believe is under the influence, this is what our process is. We take them down to the school nurse. She can do an observation of them. We can call law enforcement. And I don't even want to say this publicly, but mom got to get involved. They come in and say, "Nope, they're not doing anything." They can go home, and then they come back, come back the next day without any issues. Law enforcement can't do anything, we can't do anything. We can't force law enforcement to do anything. We can't force them to do an alcohol test or anything like that, so. My staff doesn't like to hear, but there's just, that's what I was saying about the dual, there's no system. So, I know of a district up in this area that had a student, a female student, who stole stuff from math at 10:00 AM in the morning, back to school two, that's two o'clock that afternoon.
Wow.
I know of another school in this area that's had three students that stole seven cars over the course of three weeks. You'd go to prison if you were an adult. And everyone missed a day, it's cool. So, what do you do, you know, to... Alcohol sensors, we do have the, we have the old ones that Governor Jankel gave us. Well, does anybody know how long Governor Jankel's been gone? And how long he's no longer been a governor? That's the late nineties, folks. I mean, they still sort of work. I have them if I need them, but we generally just go down to the nurse's station, and if they're under the influence, we go through that process. Depending on how the parents are. It's a productive process, and some, it's not. It's just, "Okay, I'm taking them home, they'll be back tomorrow." We can't, we can't do random drug testing because we don't have it in our policy. In our district, I can tell you that several years ago, when it was kind of a big trend for schools to do random drug testing specifically for athletes, we, as a district, had some conversation and just chose not to put that out. Is it something we relook at? I don't know. We have vape detectors in all of our restrooms, but what we know of as adults now, as the kids, or when they're blowing the vape, you know, they're blowing it into their clothes. And so, it dissipates enough where it's not detecting the sensation. Anyway. Any questions or comments regarding what you did look at in the handbook? I'll keep going through that, and then I'll have some more formal... Well, I will have a formal version that I would like to approve next month. That's it.
I think the one thing we have to also address, we need to get a code of conduct for adults.
We have that on, it's supposed to, so that was one thing I was...
We need to have something that is a little bit more concrete. If you're out of line at a game, or you're out of line at a concert, what are the ramifications? Also, I think we need to look at doing something, I understand, I was not at the grade school concert, Mr. Case, but I understand you had to remove somebody at the grade school concert recently?
Correct.
And that, it was pretty boisterous.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, and kudos to you for doing it. But I think that we also have to look at who can assist. I mean, is Mr. Case always going to be there and able to do it? Is Dr. Block always going to be able there to do it? I think we need to have, whether it's coaches, staff, or members of the community that pass a vetting process, I think we got to have something to start policing these events to... Unfortunately, we've had an uptick in the last couple of years, three years of parents being out of line, for lack of a better phrase, at kids' events. I think we need to have a code of conduct for parents, that if you're at the armory, or you're at a school event, this is what applies to you.
And there needs to be consequences associated with it. So, if something does happen, that we have this code to follow. And I agree, I did talk to Dr. Block a little bit about it today, and I just, I think that they can't just be the only ones. We need to have other people to help enforce them. And you two are not always together, you know, at the same events together. And it needs to be more than just you, or you handling these situations. Who that is and what it looks like, I don't know, but it... We need to address them, in my opinion.
I recall a time, Mike Wiley, I think sprinted down the bleachers from Bearcat TV. I mean, I haven't seen Mike move that fast in, I don't know how long. Because I think that there was a parent going after a coach. And he got down there and did a good job. But we need to have, something needs to be done in regards to that. And I think it would involve, if you're found to be in violation, it's exclusion from events.
So, there have been some situations, and I think one thing we have to do is, you know, our administration and the athletic director's position, we've come from Bill to Adam to Nathan, and part of this is maybe my fault for not having something documented. But I can remember at least one situation which a father was an issue during boys' basketball several years ago. And then that same father was an issue during girls' athletics within recent years. And it's just like, yeah, we forgot about that situation because it was multiple years ago. In my opinion, you look at that, it's like, you kind of, you can learn how to behave. And if you can't behave 10 years ago, and you can't behave five years ago, maybe you shouldn't get to go to our games. But somehow, we've got to keep track of that. If there's turnover, if there's different things, so. I'm not opposed to, not opposed to removing people. And I'll say it right to the camera. One incident that occurred several years ago, it might have been when Mike Wiley was, no, he was AV at the time. I was not there, and when I spoke with those parents, three of them that I had a call on Monday, I said, "I'm here to tell you that if I was there, there's no apologizing. You get to stay there. You get in my way, and we have to deal with it back to that level that we've got to say, should this person be here? You're getting out, my suggestion is to, I will come to you as a board and say, I want them gone for multiple days, multiple games, multiple events." We don't have to, it's not a right to come to these things. It's a privilege. And just because you pay for it, if it's a paid event, doesn't mean you have a right, you pay the right to abuse officials, or abuse kids, or abuse administration, or you want. So, I'm all for booting people for multiple days, multiple events. I don't care if it's fair or not. We all know how to behave as adults. And if we don't, there's consequences. It's not a difficult concept.
I totally agree, this is a no-brainer. There should be no tolerance. We can't have parents interfering with kids and coaches. Just not any tolerance for it, doesn't... I truly believe we should have a policy, we should be pretty strict.
I agree.
It's not, not any effort, it should be, just, it should be done.
The 24-hour cooling-off period needs to be adhered to.[1664.94]